Paul, meeting on.
Can't start the meeting till it's around, right?
Excuse me?
Can't start the meeting till it gets you.
And somebody, you guys made up a copy of the base report. You held that one, then he was up at the other one with the minutes.
Hey, we get it, give you a week there.
Rick, where's the regulars at?
Fired, I told you.
Hi, my name is Steve.
Hey, Steve.
Definitely like that, bro.
Has he got your.
Yeah, what's over there?
Has he got his seat?
He wasn't in Millens too?
Yep, I'll keep that.
Okay. You what?
I said, did he have your seat?
No. Be good, I'm just top notch. You gonna get the notice too? Nice to keep the.
Don't blame him, go to the back down.
Cause you're not close to the brownies after you had your seat. They just come out the oven.
We got fat pill.
How many things you want?
Oh, I can see.
What?
Your paper? Before?
Yeah, it's up there in there, it's all tough. I don't know for a while, something.
Startle.
You didn't miss no lot of while, eh? Are you okay saying? I bought the rebound statue.
I found it, I found it. That's where I found it.
I found all of it. I found all of it.
Eight and change. I probably should've gave you right by.
I know. He wants to be a green slip back for that again.
Yeah, we know. He got to breathe cheer, but yeah.
No.
He won't. Anyways, he wants the badge of power.
Ooh.
No, I love to.
Everybody had a chance to work the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, Scott?
Girl. Of course I do.
I do too.
I do too. You ladies first.
Yeah, ladies first.
Did Bob Billock settle with us?
Nope.
He has not.
We haven't settled with him either. I mean, we had, he hasn't, uh, he hasn't been paid out to where it's done, done, which still right down. Ross, uh, they ran through an attorney, he said he won't. But for once, he's taken it off there. So.
What's the economy got to do about it, I don't understand. We just need to settle with Bob to get that closed out.
Well, let's know, we need to get it closed out before we settle with Bob, cause if we settle with him before we close it out, he won't get closed out.
He's behind two years on the report splitting in the file cabinet.
I did, uh, check that, uh, we, we was, uh, curious about the last five properties that were built. And one of them was the four plaques over there on garage. It's taken care of, it was good. The one over Green Street was good. Three of the five was known, there's only two that, uh, new builds. Water Street and one on North.
So we owe, we owe him building permit money. Bob, just a little bit. You're never gonna get those reports.
Then he's never gonna get that money.
Yeah. He owes two years worth of reports, there's no way. Bob, his age is gonna be able to take care of that.
He says he'll come over.
He's working it supposedly, but my point is, I have told Brenda that, uh, you know, you get paid till they're done, I mean, we can't. I don't wanna dump a power, a mess on Wayne County that's good enough to take over, uh, what we need taken over. We cannot afford to hire a building commissioner.
Oh, no.
Period, so that's why we, we went with them. But, uh, and to make it all official, we're waiting on the attorney, uh, Ron Ross, to draw up the agreement, which, uh, it's already settled, the commissioners have already voted on, they're just waiting on that agreement. But I did talk to Hager Muffin today, and, uh, he said he'll put a bug in his ear again.
Who's gonna be the inspector?
Wayne County.
No, but who?
Steve Sorrels.
Steve Sorrels, uh, he was reserved with me over in Cambridge City, man, back in 2000.
Yeah, and naturally, uh, when he come up, I hadn't come up here one day, and there was an electrician that had been wanting to get a permit, he was doing some electric work at the house next to me on 14 Washington, and, uh, Steve did go down there for him, he talked with the guy here, was very, I mean, the guy knew what he was talking about. And, uh, so he did go down there and do that inspection for him, so it's, it's in the works. Best idea.
Right, he's a good guy to, to do that, he's been doing it a while, yep.
Very knowledgeable.
Okay, and my other thing is, I wanted to thank you for pressure washing and cleaning the dog kennel out. But my big question is, why did you do that, not the street department?
I wanted to get paid, pay more money on the error.
Why are you funny?
We're supposed to work together? I'm just asking question. We're supposed to work together and help each other?
Well, certainly.
So that's what that was, that was Rick helping us.
I just, I just, I know that we couldn't put any other dog in there, so I had to do something. So I threw all the, all the blankets and everything out, and I washed, I washed and sanitized the, the concrete and the, the dog house itself, I took them apart, spraying down with a cleaning solution and then.
Well, wood is good and dry, it might be a wise idea to go ahead and paint it white to match the building.
I don't know, I like it like it is, cause it offsets.
Well, it does, but that's something that's gonna have to.
I'd rather wash it again next year or a year after, I don't care. Long ago coming here, I can power wash it while I'm on the clock, right, buddy?
Yeah, it's a clock. That's where he put sensor protectant on it.
Uh, you could probably stain it or something, you wanna stain it, I mean, stain would probably look better.
Get the dogs chew on it?
No, cause it's fences on the other side of it.
They can leak through it though.
Well, I mean, we can't be responsible for what dogs do.
Well, we could be responsible with poison. If we put some.
Uh, but as long as it's a normal act, yeah, if I go out there and spray with the arsenic, yeah, that would be a problem, but hot spraying it was normal. Stuff that you put on a fence, then it would be what it is. But it, power working looks good, it looks real good, it stands, it offsets the whiteness of the building, so. But if you wanna paint it, buy me a gallon of paint and I'll paint it.
It's a need to be a walk.
And we got.
That's all the, thank you.
For working. Are we seeing a water? Completely diluted everything on our leave over, we needed Adam. Everything got taken care of on that.
Now, that used to got signed last.
What is this question?
But that was gonna.
Do you still go down there? Um, Caroline's?
He probably washed it a couple of years ago, but these would be, well, 20 years old either.
We, we signed the agreement with Adam, correct?
Yeah, you done that.
It isn't, yeah, no.
Okay, and then the ordinance stuff on the trash, is that already good done, or?
The first of, uh, June, it'll be billed for May.
There's none, it's been.
It'll be in the paper, it had to be in the paper.
Just want to double check.
Right.
Before we.
Take care of it.
Make sure it was in the paper.
There was a copy of the, uh, ordinance and the, uh, letter.
Letter, yeah, but approved the letter.
On the door and at the post office?
Post office is the, the ordinance and the letter that you break up, being put up.
It's on that door there.
I think the letter's up there, I'm not sure, there can be a copy of it if not.
And the first raise is next one. Is that correct?
In June from.
From May, yeah. See, I couldn't do it for April because it was only paper, yeah. We had to advertise it first.
And I'm surprised, uh, well, I haven't gotten any calls, maybe the other boy never have gotten a call.
No, I have not.
Wait till the bills go out, you'll get the calls.
Well, it's only two hours.
I know. No, it would've been worse if we'd just stayed with, uh, Rob G, so. I hope they realize that, it would've been.
I owed a lot of people that.
They don't care, all they see is that our bills are raised.
Yeah, one nerves. And, uh, there was a, a minor issue last Tuesday, uh, they had a truck issue. Truck broke down, so.
I digress.
They did get the trash, but it was in the afternoon, and there was people, of course, on face, grown up Greens folk. Well, we should've stayed, look at this, here's the thing. They agreed to pick our trash up every Tuesday.
Don't you say what time?
Personally, I don't care if it's midnight, if it's before midnight, it's still that Tuesday. And it's, uh, if they have, people have to understand, if you have a mechanical issue, you have to fix it. And they did get it done on Tuesday, so personally, I ain't mad at them.
I'm pleased with her.
Oh, I take that back, I did get a call from an individual.
Yeah? Oh, from me? I just said, do you know where that trash has been coming from? I come home from work and I always pull my panty in immediately.
Rumpkey before, and we've actually had it picked up the next day.
Correct.
So that's all I gotta say about that, is, you know, they can complain, oh, but it was picked up the day they said it was gonna be picked up. Rumpkey doesn't guarantee that.
We will never please the mast.
Yeah, I don't worry about it, I'm not concerned about.
No, I'm not, uh, yeah, I didn't lose sleep.
I, I look at a deal, I'm gonna pick the best deal either way, I mean, that's just.
Already did. We did.
My other question is actually for Doug, how, how is everything with the torque hub drive?
The what, Scott?
That $31,000 part we had to put into the, to the front.
It's running.
That's something else.
I know.
When he first put it in, there was an issue with it, it was running backwards, but he, uh, I talked to Doug, and he was in contact with the people, he found out how to make it go.
I was gonna say. Complication.
Have a drive, it's.
No, it's the, uh.
Single phase mode.
Did you hear me, Doug?
Do what?
Was that an installer complication? Was it running backwards?
Yeah, had to change wires five and eight, I couldn't remember, I know you could reverse, uh, 110.
Yeah.
Motor, but I just.
I figured out what it was, once you said that, I was like, okay, that's just a reverse on the wires.
Yeah. I just couldn't remember how to do that.
That's good.
But it's fixed, it's all fit.
Not a big.
We're not all done, I still have to hook up the, uh, sensor and alarm for it.
But are we in compliance now with that?
Yeah, we're putting out good product.
We're not popping poop in the river, that's a good thing.
And you are one big thing to do, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
It's me. Phone, research and all the little parts and medical issues. And he's contacting our keeper, and he estimates it's gonna be like 41.
Once it's all set and done, but kind of labor.
That gotta make sense.
Well, he had to have somebody come out and.
Gotta do it.
Somebody come back in and.
Yeah, we had to bring, we had to bring Cooley's out to, uh, because we had almost three and a half foot of sludge sitting on top of the.
That's why I was worried about too, with.
That we had to get off, we couldn't just fire things back out, we couldn't.
Because, cause everything had to be shut down, it was just gonna keep building up, and that's gonna start like solidifying stuff like that, so I was worried about stuff breaking, but we tried to start it up.
We called it off first.
Well, Cooley's had to move, uh.
Yeah, Cooley's got our sludge off the top of those.
Man, you guys could've drove out there and checked too, I mean, that's what I did, cause I was curious myself, so I just drove out there, lo and behold, Doug was out there, and he explained all that to me and showed me five and eight, and, uh, and, you know, all three of us, we got permission to go out there whenever we need to or want to.
And you was in confined space, a good bit of time too.
Which time?
Which time?
And we definitely appreciate it, and, and especially your knowledge on, like, cause I guarantee I wouldn't know what to do.
All the parts it took.
I mean, I understand the part about the, the motor, cause that's, what is that, just like reverse polarity or something?
Yeah, it changes the way the, uh, energy enters the commentator and field, so you're just.
That makes complete sense to me there, cause I've seen that before.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember how to do it, so I made phone call.
Good for you to have a good phone number, right?
The, uh, the company that built that down in Norcross, Georgia, uh, kept up with their promise, we had it here in two weeks. You know, they, they get exactly what they said they would do, and they were on the phone with support. My hat's off to these guys.
Yeah.
And he's been for probably 20 years.
20.
I hope so, for $31,000.
Plus another 10.
Well, but if you, now, if it, if it was to go out, you'd have a, you'd have, you'd have an actual replacement gearbox or motor, you could do it.
And that's the thing, so the company that made that was, uh, Fairfield, and they're out of Lafayette, Indiana. Well, Dana Bottom out, and the problem was that with Dana Bottom, they quit producing stuff like they did before, and they put their attention into another field. So they had reinvented this particular torque hub, using some gearboxes out of Italy, uh, so parts are more available now. And they say they're a little better. The quality is, if not, is as good, not bad.
Good, anybody got anything else about the minutes?
Yep.
No, that was my big thing. Now I'm making motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
Let's, go ahead.
I'll second it. Most have been made in proper respect, to accept the, uh, medicine last month meeting, I would say aye. Aye, I would post say the same. Thank you. We ain't got no citizens here.
We ain't got no?
We ain't gotten none, we won't.
Was greeting much.
We ain't gotten none.
I'm gonna be a voice for a couple citizens.
Alrighty. Go voice.
I, I had a couple people approach me about the old green trash cans that are sitting around town.
He, he went to wire.
Yeah, problem is they're not getting emptied, and Rumpkey, or best way is not gonna empty them, because they're not out of the, uh.
So we didn't think about.
Yeah, it is.
I guess we just kinda forgot all about.
And, and nobody's really itching to have those, you know, it's like Walt told me, he's got, I got four cans sitting here. I don't care if I green ones here. He just needs to be emptied and gone.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, you guys gotta decide, do we get rid of them?
We either get rid of them or we get in a storm somewhere.
Yeah, it's a lot of store, and they're pretty, getting pretty rough shape.
They're rusty, aren't they?
Do we have an avenue to get rid of them?
They're metal, aren't they?
Yeah, we'd have to take them over to the, they are.
So then we could probably just take them and to like recycling centers or something.
It's a, it's a town thing, product, so you're gonna have to, uh, create an ordinance that we can do that with, because of.
Can we just take them to the dumpster?
Yeah, it's only fresh. Yeah, we can do that, I mean, you have to create an ordinance, because it's town property.
But not to take us on a dump.
No, no, we just load them up, take them out there.
First, if we deem they're rusted, they're no longer.
No longer valuable.
How about the green containers that they're in, you're just gonna throw those away?
That's what I'm talking about.
Well, you don't matter wire cage, you do.
Yeah, oh, I thought you were talking about trash cans, they're bad too.
Yeah, all of it's.
All of it's bad, so you just get rid of it.
Trash and all, just.
Okay.
Gonna be. Do we need a motion for that, or can we just do it?
I just, I put the motion that way, you got record of it.
Yeah.
It, it's no value, like a pencil.
Bud?
What?
You wanna make a motion?
I'm, no, I'm not gonna make a motion, but you can, I'll, I'll second it and all that, or he can second it.
Or make a motion, we keep rid of them.
I'll second that.
Most have been made proper second to get rid of the, uh, old, outdated, rusted up trash cans. They used to sit out West Street, and I don't even know if people have been using them, or they all got stuff in them?
Yeah.
They full?
Yeah.
How are we gonna get rid of them, you guys gonna take them with a dump?
Dump trailer probably, just take them over to Mo Doc's dump them.
Oh, we can't take them to any of these.
They'll charge you.
Tomorrow we're free. Either place got charges. Wouldn't they got me?
Since our best way.
I resonate it, we got ripping plates, we don't charge.
Of course, the other, the two that you've got, set out. One big item, and they'll pick it up on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
Pull up the garden, let's see if they pick them up.
Sure. I would.
We'd try that first.
I stack them in.
I would, uh, if, if you wanna do that, uh, let's call and talk to the guy, best friend, say, hey, we're gonna set these out, we want them picked up, I'm sure he'll say, okay. On the next, and let's see, when was the, uh, first Tuesday was this last Tuesday, so Wednesday, yesterday, it should've had a truck going around.
Question.
That's why yesterday, that's why I'm saying Wednesday was the first, yesterday was the first Wednesday.
Yeah.
So the truck should've came around.
Maybe I'll move them out.
So what'd you start?
Okay, okay, so if they don't pick them up, okay, we have to pay to dispose them, right? But what if, because we can't send them to the recycling center to cash them out or anything, but what if somebody offered to take them off our hands for free and did that? Would that? Same way, just, just so if we have another option, if they don't pick them up, cause they would scrap them, or whatever.
The thing is, they could, they could still get nailed on it, because these are, and these are town, I mean, that's the amount of people that use these trash cans.
Yeah.
Are towns, so they walk in there and try to get rid of them, and they, somebody notices it.
Give them some.
Yeah.
Ah, okay. And anytime you do something like that, did you have somebody in mind?
No.
Well, I was gonna say, if you did, that's a bitch, because they got to do it, and they didn't get the, I had no. Fill them with, it should've been put into paper, so.
I was just trying to save any ounce of money somehow.
Just set them out different places, first gun, first sir, pick her up.
They'll say, well, I didn't know it and tried to get it, it's not fair.
That's our tough.
Well, that's what I was looking at, is trying to avoid us having to pay the fees to get rid of them.
Fees to get rid of what?
Cause he'll have to pay dumping fee.
For what?
To get rid of this trash can.
Unless they put them out for the track, have the trash picked up.
If they pick them up.
If they pick up every other track, we got trash cans.
I would think they would, but.
That's, you know, we, now we're back to square one, where that was brought up, and I said, we'll call them, let them know they need picked up, and have them pick them up.
One item for a month.
Go to step two again, or we know where that.
One item for a month.
He indicated if he had a big item, he could put it up, except on copper, maybe they did, you remember when it.
He even said, wait a minute, it was even brought up that on that first Wednesday, if you had a living room suit, set it out, they'll take it, the whole suit, not just one item.
Yeah.
Or half a couch, or a third of a couch, and, uh, the whole deal.
Would that include pillows?
No, you gotta tell them, all right, moving on. Anybody got anything else?
No.
Unfinished business, that was it.
We just talked to them. Yeah, we just talked about when Kathy brought up, uh, selling work, waiting on the agreement from the county attorney. Mr. Hager Muffin was gonna be good with him, stay on him, stay on him with it, that's what we said. Uh, Storm Drains in Maple Street, we still waiting on to see if, uh, the plant is open, right, pavement plant?
Yes, it is, the, uh, the wastewater plant took precedent.
Oh, right, 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 and we, we do.
Yeah, it took precedence, so that's the next thing on the agenda, is to get that knocked out.
Oh, right, I, I agree.
And.
I definitely.
Don't forget, that took Wayne and Shepherd both out there helping him on that.
And Beck.
All like.
Yeah, thank goodness for her. She went and helped.
I had to have a spotter, and she was the only one available, so I could go down there and weld.
Yeah, that's dangerous.
Yeah, you don't do that with other sm.
Hanging by a quarter inch cable, yeah, with a welder in your hand, that ain't no fun, spinning like a monkey.
And.
Talking about bad memory, dude.
Yeah, I was grateful.
Felt like Peter Pan flying over and taking full of crap.
And Wendy, was Wendy there spotting you?
That was who was spotting me.
I have list reports.
Neither am I. Pem my upper. Ow. Should we sing?
There may be brownie pants on it.
You what?
We ready, sir.
Talking to you, we're talking marks ourselves, sir, you're out there, you do your thing, we'll do our picture.
Long this little quarter, I don't care.
It is.
Uh, had the, uh, Indiana Town Marshal Association, uh, had their conference, uh, and there we got to do, uh.
Thank you.
Uh, defensive tactics, so that, that helped qualify for this year. Uh, set up the YouTube channel last month, so we can start recording our own meetings. I would say this is a pogameter, they got maybe one, one more month left of coming here. So, uh, I got, I got that set up, we're still haven't decided on whether we're gonna get a, a camera dedicated, or keep using that laptop, or what the case is, so. It's, uh, July 1st is gonna be mandatory, we put something out, so. We do got the laptop, but if you wanna get a camera, or dedicated camera, that's.
What are you guys saying?
I'm, I'm gonna vote for the laptop after the expense we had in the sewer plant.
Again, explain, run that by me, again.
Cause he was talking about, when we have to start broadcasting these, streaming these or whatever?
Live stream.
We were talking about, we might need to do a camera, or whatever, separate camera, or we could use the laptop and its built-in camera. I'm leaning towards the laptop with built-in camera right now, because we just spent like, probably close to $40,000 or more.
In which laptop are we talking about?
The one he set up, uh. Okay, okay, so then you're. So you're gonna be taught on how to use the laptop, so you can be responsible for turning it on and setting it up, and starting the live stream. That's what I'm trying to tell you, so, uh, you can do that, but somebody in this town hasn't got to be responsible for that, cause I might not be here, I might not come in that day.
Or me.
I might be coming late, so.
Trying to get rid of you for 25 years, we just took it, so we in the, worried about that.
I'm just saying, someone's gotta be responsible for this so-called live streaming, and you better make it as simple as possible.
And where will you set this live?
Uh.
Right there, right there.
You can put it on this wall here.
Well, it's gonna show everybody though, I thought.
That, that's not what it says in the statue, you need to read the statue, what it says, and that's not what it says.
So as long as it shows us up here?
And, and it's recording the conversation of what's going on in the.
Like you said, if it's on that wall back there, it's gonna cover the whole room anyway, as I can.
So you, you were talking about mounting it up above?
It's something that you can activate.
Pretty much easy.
With ease, because if not, then it's gonna become or some, I mean, I mean, I can do the YouTube video, for the, I know what YouTube channel to go to, and to start the live stream. And it, it's not that hard, but what happens if, if I'm gonna be late or, or not coming in for some reason?
What if Scott's not here, what if Bud's not here, what if I'm not here? I'm talking about, it sounds to me like we all need to know how to do it, and I don't wanna do it.
Why, that's what I'm saying, that there's cameras you can buy, you basically just touch a button, and it starts live streaming.
How much are those?
I, that, it varies, I'm just saying, this is stuff that we need to look at for the next couple months.
What's the difference in price we're talking here?
Uh, under a thousand dollars probably, I would assume.
For the live stream or for the camera?
No, for the camera, the live thing's free to YouTube, that's free.
That's reason Scott was saying he wanted to go with it, it's free.
Yeah, Scott, YouTube's free, but, well, I'm saying, how you get to live stream, we have, we have a lap, we have a brand new laptop, so that was, that was, uh, given to by the state, Indiana Supreme, Indiana State Supreme Court had a program, it gave us a laptop, so.
At one time, when this first came out, there was talk of a camera that could sit in the middle of the table.
Still is.
That would do the thing, and I was just curious, how does that compare in price to anything else?
Probably.
A lot more.
I would say now between seven and a grand, somewhere in that.
And the live stream, how much?
The live stream, the, the, all we're talking about is camera.
Oh, okay.
Equipment.
We're all talking about equipment needed to live stream, that YouTube allows us to live stream to their platform for free.
Is there any chance that, uh, down the road, they come out and YouTube comes down and says, okay.
Yeah.
Now we're gonna charge you.
Oh, sure.
Because they, they're talking about charging you for wifi or not wifi, but, uh,
Man.
Facebook.
It's unlikely because YouTube makes their money off commercials. That's how they make their billions every year off commercials. So.
Yeah.
I don't see that being, that, that being an issue, but.
Well, I agree with you on this saving the money, but I think the camera is by far the better option.
Yeah, cause I'm not.
Well, how about we just start?
You don't want to do the other either.
Well, I'm just not a real, real good with computers.
Well, I'm not good at all. That's why, what I said.
We're all adults. We can all be taught to do whatever we need to do.
Yeah, I mean, we could, I can create a icon on, on the desktop that you click and it goes to the YouTube channel. Then you, you, you start streaming, but I would rather have something that you just push a button on the camera and it does its thing.
I totally agree.
What I'm talking about, the thing? That's the camera you're talking about? What camera are you talking about?
I don't know. I don't know. I haven't looked, I haven't looked at any cameras that do.
Who was the one that brought up?
Ron do.
Okay. Could, can you give us a little insight on those cameras, Ron, that you was talking about?
The owl, I think it was called.
Owl. So some of them were, they're a little different. It's like a tower. Some of them have a camera, some have three cameras, four cameras. Where they cover, you know, ninety degrees, hundred eighty degrees, three hundred sixty degrees. Depending on how many cameras they got. You can set them so that
Render.
One camera shows one person on the council. The other camera shows another person on the coun- it's like in the, the YouTube window, there'd be little, little windows. And, and each camera view would be in a little window where one points at the audience. You know, the other three point at y'all or however you break it down.
Is this something that could be mounted at the back of the room? Excuse me, just like we were talking with the other?
There's some that you can mount in a corner of the room, the ones he's talking about. It's like a little thing you sit.
Yes.
Literally like.
You're talking about.
Right on the table.
But I'm talking about if it was back there by the air conditioner, pushing this way, it could get the whole room.
It would get the whole room. You wouldn't want the more expensive four camera one then. You would just want the one camera version. Because it, it only needs one camera to see the whole room from the back of the room.
Enough for me.
Laptop setting back there would do the same.
Right. But the good news is that we can use the laptop to be figure out a, a better route to go. Cause other towns are going to have to do this stuff. So we can talk to Centerville. They can talk to.
It also, it doesn't say where it has to be the live stream too. It says it's got to be live streamed. And wasn't it brought up that it could be live streamed just to Facebook?
Yeah, that counts. Facebook counts. But you have to give it a, but you have to have in your public meeting, it has to be posted where it's, where it can be viewed at.
Would you put a shelf up back there by the clock if you were going to put it back there?
But they have some that just mount on like a, a wall mount or a ceiling. It's like a camera that just.
Yeah.
And then you would hook it to say like, it would go to your computer. And then when you guys get ready to have a meeting, you would open up the little app and tap the go button or whatever it's called on.
Do you have any idea of the expense we're talking?
They were in the neighborhood of like six hundred to a grand. I mean, there was some way over that, but those are way more advanced than what we need. Um, you know, ballpark, six hundred to a thousand bucks.
I think the camera is the definitely the best option.
And basically it was just, it was wifi to like to her computer. And then she'd click on the icon and then hit, hit start or go, whatever the function with the.
You could start it out here, right? Without, without going in.
No, you go into the computer, you click on the icon for video camera or whatever system is called. I, the icon, it opens up the program, then you hit the start button and it starts.
Now we store with this because we have to.
Stores it on YouTube. Goes to YouTube. That, that's why I like YouTube.
I'm talking about the camera.
Nah, they're all stored on the camera.
Don't store it on the camera.
Store it on YouTube for free.
How if we use the cam?
When you hit the button on the app, it activates the camera and starts the live stream. And then they store it on the camera. Yeah, they, they.
How do you store it if you use a camera?
The camera is stored on YouTube by live stream. Yeah, it, it just goes to the YouTube cloud or whatever. It, there's no physical media that you're storing it to.
Right.
So you guys don't have to worry about like, oh, we need a twenty terabyte server to.
On our end.
Right, right. YouTube takes care of it all.
There, there is one, but it's not on our end.
Well, I'm like you, Scott. I don't know much about computers.
I, I use them all.
This, the reason why it's brought up like this is so that you got to start having a conversation over the next couple of months or next month or next three or four months. Talk to other towns, see what they're doing.
We only have one more month.
But in the meantime, use the laptops for the thing.
Yeah, yeah, use laptop. And like I said, contact Hagerstown, Centerville, Cambridge City, see how they're doing theirs.
Okay, on laptop, how do you store it?
You don't.
It goes to YouTube.
It goes to YouTube regardless.
We don't store anything.
It's camera, our laptop. Okay.
All we do is turn it on, push the button.
Laptop or camera and stores on YouTube. Yeah, YouTube has a lot of commercials. So let's have it.
That's how, that's how they make their videos.
Corrected for a commercial. Okay, continue, Mika.
Uh, cleaned out the kennels, power washed the kennel fan, run a bid complaining, uh, A-Ride train. You can give me an example of what the A-Ride is? So like your standard field sobriety is more for mainly drunk people, alcohol related impairment. The A-Ride is, uh, an advanced step up from SFST. Um, there's kind of like three levels. One is the SFST, two is the A-Ride, three would be the DRE Drug Recognition Expert, which is crazy Jedi mind stuff. Them dudes are awesome. But so the A-Ride, you learn a few more different types of sobriety tests that you can use that deal more with, uh, people's motor skills and, and more physical impairment. Um, a lot of that has to do with their vision, their eye behavior, patterns in the eyes. Um, pupil sizes. Um, it just gives you a, a whole nother set of tools to use to detect if somebody's impaired by drugs versus alcohol.
They'll recognize it easier then.
Right.
It gives you, it, it gives you the ability to build probable cause so you can go get a chemical test.
Chemical test being?
Blood.
Urine?
Yeah.
Blood?
Yeah.
Very. So you can't just take an individual to read if you suspect them.
Yeah, you've got to be more than.
Probable cause.
You gotta have more than just suspect. You gotta have some, some tangible evidence that, hey, yeah, he's under the influence. I mean, it's nice if you can get him to admit, yeah, I smoked, uh, I smoked some crack cocaine earlier this afternoon, but it's not usually, you get the head.
Unless they're all still loaded, right?
So this train get you identify probable cause.
Right. For, yeah, for, for, uh, for, uh, drug.
Drug impaired drug.
Yeah.
Yeah, alcohol.
Cause they don't have a test.
That, that were tested drugs yet.
And actually they do.
But it's not yet.
It's a Sotoxa and it's kind of like, so the PVT, you blow it, click. You wait, beep, gives you a result, tells you, you know, point zero two or whatever, right?
You're talking about the breath.
The, the portable, the roadside. So there's a tox, uh, it, it has a, a swab. You swab the inside of their mouth. Put it in the machine. Break, you pop a couple of, uh, little, uh, ambulances on the test set. It introduces them, mixes it and spits out a result on what drugs are in their system.
And this tool is onsite? This is.
This is red side. This would be something you use red side.
Yeah, we all, we all have it. That right there is.
We don't have them.
Too expensive. Not for now. Tell a grand cap through.
There's a grant for that. Yes, there is.
Yeah.
I, I bet this is a crazy.
I guess my question is on something like that, uh, let's say you, you pull somebody over and you smell pot. So you were to give them this.
Now, now if you got smell, if you smell marijuana, that's in itself enough to ask for a chemical test. If they smell marijuana. But typically we try to get more, try to do, do a little bit deeper.
Yeah, my question was how far back does this test go?
So this tox is, so like, when you ingest drugs, your body uses a certain amount of the drug. Some of that drug is stored in your fat cells. Your cheeks are covered in fat cells. So when you swab the inside of the cheek, it picks up the fat cells. You put them in the machine, it metabolizes that fat cell content, tests it, and then tells you if there's something present in it. Uh, from there, you know, if you've had a positive result, if, if there's, that would not be like, it's not like, you know, you pull somebody over and show a PVT in their mouth, right? You've observed indicators, their, their driving patterns.
Crazy for you to believe us.
There's, you know, uh, you know, roughly tw- close to two dozen indicators of impaired driving. See, really look for those indicators. If you see the indicators and you're stopping them for let's say those indicators, you're kind of already going down that road, right? So then the PVT or the stocks would come in and give you a little bit more, you know, to add to your field sobriety test that you've already conducted, that they've probably failed. So now you're moving to the PVT or the stocks. You're just adding things up, right? You're not just, oh, well, you know, you turned wide, didn't use your blinker. So blow them to this meter. You're like, no, it's not how it works, right?
But normally the, uh, the drug test, if you will, is the first, first step. Gets them by them, cuts their nose and.
We would be evaluating them. You know, like.
What's that?
Sobriety test.
It's barbed. Thank you.
It, it's gonna start as soon as we approach you. Like we're, we're looking for your eye contact, your, your ability to focus on tasks. You know, if I ask you for a license or registration and you hand me your license and can't even remember you have a registration, let alone that I asked you for it, you're showing some indicators.
Impairment.
Now, one of those things in and of itself, maybe you're just an older guy who forgets stuff.
Airpoop guy.
But if I've seen driving indicators, now I start seeing behavioral indicators. Pupillary reaction. You know, slurred speech.
Well, it's something you've always observed in the past.
Right. Now you're just adding, you're right. Now you're just adding a little more to it with some other cues that you learn how to interpret.
I've always said years ago, uh, people that work at factories, they was getting fired because they, uh, they would test them for something and they go, oh my God, you've had marijuana in your system. And, you know, it may have been twenty days prior. So at the time that there was an issue, was that a factor?
Well, see that, well, that's, that's why. When you get into, to urine testing, well, many times it'll give you a positive, but like you said, is that positive relevant to right now, which is where we go? Blood draw.
Yeah, they had really.
They start getting into micrograms, nanograms, these minute traces. And they know how much of that substance it's going to cause impairment. So, you know, you've got some zero, 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 you know, one little particle in your blood. But it takes zero, zero, three to cause impairment. They know that, you know, that one billionth of a, of a molecule is not causing.
It took fifteen years back in the forties and fifties for the national highway safety, whatever they are, to get the blood alcohol point one oh. To, to develop as a science. They had to do like fifteen years through university studies to get to that point. You, you're gonna get to that point with marijuana at some point with all having them out. Yeah, you're impaired at however many nanograms for, you know, liters of blood or whatever they're, or whatever they're gonna test with, but, um, it's getting better. Okay. Well, thanks for that, uh, Sotoxa swab. I was always wondering how they were gonna do that. I mean. Well, that's just one. They got others that they're taking, taking breast samples and they're trying to analyze that. So I mean, it's, the technology's out because it, it needs to be least intrusive as possible. I mean, maybe in some states you might be able to pull them over and draw blood on the side of the road. I don't know. I just, I, I wouldn't want to be that cop drawing blood on the side of the road, but, uh, uh, had, had a, had a dog ran loose on, on Pearl Street. Um, assisted with a missing kid case from Cambridge City. Was just, uh, making contact with individuals here in town, trying to get more information.
Saying a kid, but what kind?
It didn't, it didn't.
It didn't say.
It didn't, it didn't say.
Who's in the police car?
Ben.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Did it write a little?
Uh, done, done a bin check and then had a, had a domestic on twelve South Water Street.
Twelve or twenty-two?
Oh, sorry, twenty-two. It was one of the same.
Okay.
One of the business. Uh, twenty-two. Uh, so yeah, just, just dealing with that and there's a, uh, so hopefully they'll get things resolved and it, there wasn't a gun involved in this particular case. But the guy was allowed to go back and grab a gun out of the house. And that.
Not by us.
Not by us, by the sheriff's department. So I contacted.
What do you mean he was allowed to go back in the house?
The sheriff's department escorted him in or whatever the case was.
Catch her up on that offline, boss.
Yeah. So anyway, it was, it's, it's stuff that shouldn't have happened the way it did, but it did. And, uh, yeah, it's a, but anyways, uh, he was allowed to leave, uh, with, uh, with a, with a handgun. And so, uh, we're just keeping an eye on him. He hasn't threatened to use a handgun or anything, but he shouldn't have been in possession of one. So. Then that's pretty much my report. Anybody got it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Anybody got any questions for Rick? Today's Rick's birthday. I'd like to wish Rick a happy birthday.
All right. Well, thank her.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine.
Are you fifty-nine?
You can't turn yours around.
You know, look at day over fifty-eight. I'm sure.
I'm telling you, I'm still a bit like I'm forty. You kidding me?
Yeah.
Happy birthday, Rick.
Thank you. And, and many more.
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept the police report.
I'm so good at it. Close to been made properly seconded to accept a police report for Rick. Girl, the last month, all the favors say aye. I get aye. All folks say say.
Most carried. Thank you. In the birthday bonus, did they win it?
Yeah, there is. I get a bonus just by clocking in.
They out zeros.
I walked in last night in front. He's a bonus that he's here. You hear me, Ron? He is a bonus that he's.
He's so blessed that he's still with us.
My fire boots on.
Also known as.
Was it going any further than that?
Sewer plant.
Chicken.
Operation report. Darlene Drewley, of course not, Ted, but, uh, it is flowing a lot better than it was at the last.
It's flowing. We gotta move, we gotta move solids out of the plant yet. Uh, dumpster's on its way. We have fixed a lot of broke stuff out there last month.
Who is, uh, doing that now? Is it still?
Highway thirty-eight dumpster.
Highway thirty-eight.
At some point, uh, and I'm not trying to shoot highway thirty-eight in the foot. We need to look at getting our own tow behind. Because we're always at somebody else's mercy trying to get rid of this.
I know that's great.
Tow behind? Behind the water box.
Say it again. Tow behind?
The water box.
What's that?
Here you have. We brought it up maybe, I think it was ten years ago.
How much does one cost?
Thirty-one thousand?
No, they were less than that. I, I believe it was under twenty.
This is just something, uh, it's got wheels on it and you put the poop in it, you hook up to it.
Call it to MODOC.
Oh, MODOC.
You mean like a big tanker, like a big tanker truck?
No, like a dump trailer.
Do we have to have a special permit or anything to take that out to MODOC?
It's not hazardous, it's waste.
Do they charge us when we get out there?
They charge us anyway. So they, what they do is they send the bill to highway thirty-eight. We have to fill the permit out to be able to bring our sewage up there because we are the ones dumping. They would just bill us for poundage instead of all the towing fees and the.
Towing fees.
Yeah.
Imagine that.
Hey, I mean, if we could ground app it, I would rather ground app it than do that, but they quit.
What do you mean by ground app? I'm sorry.
Put it in the dirt.
Thread it out there on the field?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're restricted certain times of the year that you can do it because of the crops and stuff. Uh, if it goes in in liquid form, then it has to be knifed in. If it goes in as a dry form, which then that require drying beds. So it is easier to take it to MODOC.
I agree.
You know, we're the guys in the middle, man, by having.
By having our own, that and it's gonna give us more flexibility.
Well, it does.
On when we can move it. So if I need to go out there tonight and run it because something bad happened, which it did, I can't run it, I gotta wait on a dumpster and I gotta pull some of that back and run it for 60 miles.
And everybody.
That's never good, it sends an exonerator.
When you talk about one of these tow behinds, how, how much, how big is it?
Let me gal this. It's about like our dump trailer. It's about like our big dump trailer, except it's got screens built into it and it's got water channelways, it's got a roof on it, uh, to protect the screens from UV damage. Some of them done with their own pump, some of them don't. We don't need one with a pump, we got our own stuff to de-water with. We just need something.
To screen. Air transported with our truck.
Yes.
See, that's what I was getting at, what kind of weight?
It's a tandem axle. It, it's like our big dump trailer we just bought.
And our trucks are one ton.
Yes.
Okay.
But you said similar around 20,000?
It, it was when we checked on it, I'm thinking it was eight to 10 years ago, I priced it.
So it's a lot more now.
What's it called again though?
Probably, it's de-water box, a towable de-water box.
We just, we need to try to price it.
There's no money for it.
No, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, that means to be something we look, we're looking into in the future coming up.
But if you give any money from Wayne County, we didn't even go into, they got to be used for that.
Well, yeah, that was a couple of one on our list was our sewer, our sewer upgrades that would fall.
Tow behind the water, de-watering tank, de-watering box.
Yeah, these ain't it.
No, I think.
We didn't have $31,000 to fix that pump, but lo and behold, we came up with it. That's what I'm getting at. When you said, when you say we, we don't have any money, well, we didn't have $31,000 to spend for that, but we got it somewhere. That's my only point. And so, thank God we did.
I'm not saying we need to spend that today.
Right, right, right.
But I wanna put it out of your guys' ear that, you know, at some point, that's gonna improve the process.
Well, and, and what would be ideal is if, I like the idea, I do, but I think we need to gear in the next couple of years to be able to come up with money somehow to do that. But what would be nice if we could, uh, show what we're paying. Am I interrupting you guys?
We can close there.
You are next.
De-watering box, eight square, it's got all the different filters and stuff.
Yeah, that's not a towable, but that's, that's the idea.
What was the price?
Well, it's not, I have to call for a quote.
Okay.
Okay, you got anything under facilities, Doug?
Well, the plant's fixed. Yay. We, and, and that's the other thing I was getting to, that we did have to replace, uh, two pumps, the guide rails, the, the bases in the bottom of the roll tank due to the fact that rust or the acids and all that good stuff, the corrosive nature, has ate away the ears that held the pumps in place, which in the same token, the pumps were pretty well destroyed too in that toxic environment. So we had to replace them and replace the, that. And that's why earlier this month, we had to have Cooley out there again so we could clean that tank so I could get in the bottom of it and replace all this stuff.
Right.
Uh, even though it said clean, it's still never cleaned.
Cooley pumped everything out so you'd be getting to it, right?
Yes.
Got your point.
And you say you had to replace two pumps and the, or holds them?
Two pumps, the guide rails and the bases.
And guy, guide rails? And what else besides the guide rails and two pumps? Guide rails, two pumps and what else you replaced?
The base elbows.
The base elbows?
Yes. That's what holds the pumps on the floor.
Okay, very nice.
And so as far as facilities, we'll be moving on to Maple Street to, uh, scratch out the, uh, gravel and, and actually put in pavement.
Are we pressing on any place that has bad, bad holes that we have to fix?
No, the only place that's really, really bad is over there on your street and that's underneath those stupid pine trees that ate away the road. As far as holes and roughness, uh, nothing else is really horrible this way. Yet that little sort house.
Oh, you're talking about McLean's?
Yeah.
The one that's, it, the yard's such a mess?
Yeah. They, so right there, those pine trees have just ate that asphalt up. Uh, that's the only place that I know that's really bad.
Do we, do we have to do any patching anyplace?
That needs to be peeled up.
I would like to, to see at some point, I understand Maple Street is our priority. We've been dealing with that for about four years. And it's at the point where we can finish it, so I think that is our priority. But at the same time, and we got that new bigger lift, uh, trailer, or I would like to see them get a load of that and go around and patch any little hole that they find. Cause there are some popping up. Uh, now on my street, because it is a town, person straight, it's perfect. I mean, we don't have anything on water, sure, you know, my street. But anyway, I'd like to see them get one of them, uh, maybe just one day when things aren't real crazy and they've got the priority stuff done, I'd like to see them come and do that. That'd be nice. Something else that was brought up too last year and, uh, along with that is to put a couple, because they're experienced now, a couple of speed humps north main. When they get it, get it out.
But we wanna get the signs first.
We have two or three vehicles that don't even slow down, they just fly.
Are you talking about South Main or North?
Yeah, they don't even.
North Main, North 38.
They actually fly. It just, they don't care.
When was that white truck, the, close to flatbed or something?
It doesn't slow down.
And he the one that they got all the reports for on the south side of the tracks?
Probably.
Is he still speeding on the south side?
Hmm, not, not like he was. But you can hear him getting all that once he gets over tracks.
There's speed bumps, aren't they not?
Humps.
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 Thought the guy was out, out, he's an out of town farmer or something.
I, I have no idea.
That's an, it gives you an. Holy crap. That's good snack, you get a tongue hitch or.
Okay.
How much is it?
I don't know. I had to call for a quote.
Oh, yeah, they don't get prices.
Well, cause there's so many barriers.
Customize it.
Okay.
Okay, plans I've been doing that. Great, anybody got anything else for Doug?
I had just good job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job. You want to?
I just did my job, yeah.
Go eat.
Want some real food.
Okay, uh, I'll make. Excuse me?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd make the mission, the motion that we accept Doug's, uh, report. I think it's most have been made proper, seconded, if they accept Doug's report, all in favor, say aye. Still opposed, say aye. What's Karen? Say, Nita, here.
All right. In April, we took in $13,143. That made us a total of taken in this year in 2025, we've taken in 53, $56,329. But our disbursement for April was $33,189, which gives us a total for our 2025 disbursement, $78,000. Plus, it was $16,000 come out of, uh, ADIT toward the, uh, the torque hub. That was in our budget. It was budgeted, she took $16,000 out of it on top of all this. Uh, the first of April, we had, uh, eight accounts in the 90 days and we had four of those paid, so it was four new sewer lanes in April. And this time there was only 31 outstanding sewer lanes yet to be sent to the Wayne County Treasurers Department, which is not bad for us. We've had four stays in that on sewer lanes. And, uh, that's about it, but, uh, we're running close on the sewer account.
I, I'd say we are running close when you see we've, uh, taken in 56 and spent 78, that's $22,000. There's almost 50% deficit in it, Brenda, something like that?
Well, we had a little bit of a shake.
Is that torque hub number figure, are you in that?
It's in there.
Is that why it's?
Now, we're still getting bills.
That why it's all something like that, cause of that?
Yeah, yeah. It, well, I'd been saying, you know, we had a little bit of money in there, but one, one big thing like this couldn't happen and it would just, uh, carry to bargain and then, uh, and we are still getting, uh, invoices and even after, you know, the clerk treasurer done the, the checks and paid the bills from, well, yeah, she'll prove tonight. It's not your fault, we're just still getting invoices and we got them in the mail after she done all the checks.
It's old, I mean, it's gonna hit.
And, uh, sooner or later. Look at them.
All we do is prepare the next one.
Yeah.
Can anybody got anything else from Nita?
I hope it looks better next.
Well, it came up a whole lot better, but it got a little bit.
You know what, though? You know what's really funny about all this and watching this and you know what? They had the same conversation to her years ago, where they was going with the town back then. Who owes me is the money, money's not here, but they kept on going, kept doing the right.
Yeah, that's how you do it, but hey, feed your horse.
Well, he went out of sight.
And recurring a buggy.
You guys are doing good. There ain't no problem with mismanaging money, you don't have the money. But these guys, these guys are doing stuff on a shoestring budget that mo, that most people can't even fathom.
Thank you. You realize that it's stressful.
We're gonna have a million dollars in media.
Army?
Thank you, Nita and Brenda for making stuff like this happen.
That's why we have to say we don't have money, we don't have money, we don't have money, because if everybody thought we have money, you find more things.
Exactly.
Well, on that, on that torque hub, I mean, I had to call Brenda. Brenda had to almost drop what she was doing to get money wired to even start production of this part. You know, and she really went above and beyond too, making this happen. You know, and then before they would ship, we had to have final payment wired to them. So again, she had to drop what she was doing to get there so this part could ship.
Yeah, you guys did a great job.
So.
My fault.
My hat's off to Brenda too.
Yeah.
It's off to all of you.
Okay.
She had to quit, she had to quit work. She was working, go do that, get to the bank, yeah.
Well, good job, Kessi.
It's up to all our employees for getting through this.
Even the ones that aren't here and everything.
He, uh, was the one that, uh, spearheaded it, I guess is a good.
Coordinate, it's my job.
Well, I know it's.
It's my tiring.
Coordinator, yeah. Get it all together.
Super attended a public horse.
And everybody cooperated with him, that was.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was a team effort and, I mean, everybody pulled together and we got it, we got it done.
Yeah.
And if we all kinda growled, especially when we were flying it up there and the rain starts and when the lightning stopped, we got off the platform when it started. You know, standing out in the rain, flying this thing up there and.
How much did it weigh? They told me one time, I think.
A little over a thousand pounds.
Yeah. Did you take a pic?
I like to never yep that putt on that bucket. Hey, you should have seen me.
Jay, it was, it was just a little bit nerve wracking as I'm flying it over the garage out there. And I'm thinking, well, that's one way to change pitch of the roof.
Everything I had fixed would be laying out on the ground. Goodness.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept Nita's sewer utility monthly income and disbursement report. I'll second that. Must have been made and properly seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say aye.
I realize that we had.
I knew one too.
An absolute big amount of rain. How long should we wait before we hit our people that their grass is two foot tall?
I, I noticed people were starting to mow.
They give a little bit of grace.
Yes.
I cut mine twice and it still looks like I haven't touched it. I mean, twice this week.
Yeah.
And it still looks like.
A lot of them should go get it cut this weekend, but they should also not be doing it on Sunday.
You're not gonna stop it on Mother's Day, it makes no difference whatsoever.
Saying they should not do it on Mother's Day.
Right.
Well, it's kinda rude to make a mom go out there and mow the grass, you know?
Unless they're doing hers. Mom needs something to do on Mother's Day too.
I agree. Well, you, you do all the mothers.
Okay, street report there.
All right, well, as we've already found out, our guys have been busy lately. Um, and once again, thanks to everybody in the town for all the work they had to do to keep us running. Um, obviously they work with Doug and, and everything with the sewer plant and stuff. Um, looks like they're also working on some mowers and getting, and it looks like they've had the grass cut and everything, so. It looks like they've been pretty busy, um. They gonna wait till they do it?
Nah, we're not, we're not.
Well, you sound really in that one.
Looks like you guys did a lot of work in the shop and stuff.
Their paint.
And cleaning up our back too.
Yeah. Say, well, most part, you guys are pretty busy with the sewer. Who of you else was here?
Well, and you already dreaded to have all that fence on your side fall away. Well, he fell in on our, and then went in, he just ripped that over.
There's not much that I could really say about the guys on this one because, I mean, we pretty much went over on all the other parts. They mostly spent most of their time with, at the plant with Doug, working on our sewer, which is finally working again, which is nice. And then it looks like they've been, of course, working on the mowing and stuff and fixing the mowers apparently. Getting stuff ready for painting and stuff, but other than that, doesn't.
There was a couple of other things I'd like to see them do. Number one is, uh, clean these gutters. They've got gutter guards, but there's stuff laying on top of the gutter guard, it's not gonna.
Let the water flow.
They need to, uh, just keep an eye on those and probably all they have to do is blow them off with a weed blower, actually, or then you get to see what they need to do, or they don't need.
Oh, should it tell Doug that before he leaves?
Well, he's right there.
Oh, I thought he wants that way.
Hi, Doug.
Can you tell him?
Is.
Yes.
That's, that's.
Ready to do.
Well, I've had to tell Doug, cause I can't see those guys. Um, when, when those guys, you have a chance, when you guys aren't quite so busy with all the other emergency stuff going, can they possibly look at the gutters on the buildings here to make sure they're cleaned out?
Yes, I'll say so. Is that what you wanted me to do? Huh? Say something to them about getting the gutters on?
Yeah, cause I mean, I, I never get to see them because of my work schedule.
I will tell them.
Can I have their phone numbers?
Yeah, but I really can't use my phone a whole lot while I'm at work.
Well, I was nice about it, he's a nori. I was a. Oh, yeah. Maybe you meet.
I mean, I have occasionally, but it's like, like if there's, like somebody's called me before, like there was your tree, tree limbs down, stuff I get and I was able to hold them that way, but, but I, I gotta try to limit what I do if I fail at work.
Well, it, that, I guess, when I'm trying to figure out, why has it gotta be a work in that? And just call them. Rick Shepherd and Wayne, I wouldn't call them way as nine, but I'm, they, I don't know that they would have an issue discussing. They, yeah, I mean, hell, you're basically the reps.
There you go.
I mean, just chatting with them. I mean, I'm.
I see Rick every once in a while. He comes to the forehouse occasionally.
He probably, he probably stops by here, parks in those courthouse and do something for somebody else. That's all he does. Hey, you don't know that. He said, no, William, you don't know.
Got a scar down the throat.
I looked and he goes, well, says, do you think you'll be okay? Put on the bell.
Did you get that?
None needs now.
Ready for the left to both.
All dirty. Let's all down the base.
Yeah, I got her. One more part to wire up.
Say what?
I'll be ready for the boars. For streets.
Did none days, saw it too long.
Except straight before you.
Oh, yeah, no.
Literally was all my.
There was, we were sort of talking about stuff.
Drake, uh, sewer.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the street report from Rick and Wayne.
Poses been made properly seconded to accept the street, just to get the street report. All the favors say aye. Aye. All opposed say the same. Thank you, motion carried. And now we're ready for a warrants.
Call them more. When they call, buddy. Oh, buddy, time to come on out.
Warrants are ready for them, right?
Uh, yes, ma'am. You must.
Go eat, Doug.
I know that one.
You look like you're losing weight. Go eat.
You get these one. Yeah. Nice, nice. That one.
Nice pans.
Nice panties.
Pens.
Fuck my god, bud. You said pants.
But you never hear us.
Nothing.
Hell, you do.
Where the last?
You two look run range, range far. Did you, everybody gets confidence, but he just laid there for us to look at.
I think he just laid there.
Like you, I've got different plans. Your job is like my job. He put it, so like, yeah, I'm trained on certain programs.
Right.
All right, I'm running Lord, Lord. Or an old man outside.
He's used at research, uh, capacity, room capacity, huh? I'm just kidding.
No, it only shows Rebecca, that though, working for twenty-four eighty-three. That's not much. She didn't, but she was here when it was emergency, when she needed to be.
At for about three hours.
Yeah. She's willing to do it. Because nobody else was available. Wayne over a thousand and Rick Shepherd over six hundred.
Yep, but a lot of that was at the sewer plant.
Worked that cheese. It's just, it, it's so bizarre. Yeah. That gave you the awesome.
Also, you feeling this?
No, it was his opposite. Now it's third drive, man, going lower from my house.
Okay, read this right here.
The stopper date you say?
Yeah.
And writing, at least ninety days after the date of the meeting that Kirk they start that. Chris, edit first, do you submit?
Our download transmission before you. Need a highlight from next meeting where we talk about this again.
Anybody a highlight? I was looking for one. Cause that caught my eye.
How would you see that? What are you talking about?
Item one there. That's, that's got me real concerned.
Seemed like it did come up last month. It just said something about the ninety day with that.
Seemed like it was something.
Well, that's saying that what we were talking about earlier won't work.
Remember I sat here and asked?
Yeah.
And that's what I had recalled them saying when they were telling us that, that you had to keep and store a copy.
Yep.
But didn't he, didn't he say that it would be kept on YouTube?
I thought that was. We got to make sure that we can access it to be able to allow that, somebody to be able to download it.
Okay, so listen real quick. It's so simple. There are two programs go along with it. I sent you a link for a camera that does an, uh, AI tracking that will track off of a hand motion. So it said it here, it will track each one of you, but you use two different programs. One's called OBS. And then you use YouTube. OBS takes it. It will do two things with it. It will send it to your streaming output. Because one, you have to have a program other than YouTube to collect the video from the camera. And that's where OBS comes in. OBS is absolutely free. It is a user-built program. Piece of cake. Most people can use it once it's set up because you just put start and it will automatically start recording. It will take and put it to a hard drive for you so that copy will be there for the next thirty days till you delete it.
It says ninety.
So you say for ninety and then you delete.
Is this kind of what you guys do with the church?
Yes.
Okay.
I do it.
System at the church.
Okay.
And this is with a?
OBS.
Live stream.
Live stream, yeah. So OBS is sending it to your platform. It's collecting the video from the camera, which allows you to do things to it and it, do things coming in the video, adjust the sound going out. Just gives you some options. You can preset it.
This is no camera.
No, that is not a camera. It collects it from the camera and then records it to either the, a hard drive or to the computer itself. Plus it will send it to the platform that you want to set. There are platforms out there such as, uh, this guy back here probably knows more about them than I do. Uh, what's the other one? Is it Twitch or?
Twitch is for gaming on, but I mean, YouTube, OBS, it's, it's open broadcast software and it's, and like you said, it's free. And so, yeah, you could go from the camera to that.
Yes.
And then, and then so YouTube, that, and YouTube's free. I agree with you. Yeah.
I mean, it puts you with two, the only thing you're paying for then is the camera. I found you just an inexpensive camera for six hundred bucks that sits there and does tracking. It'll track you on a hand gesture.
Same is, there are high schools that use the OBS.
Yeah, we, we using the churbs and they work. I mean, it works for eight, for what we do. You're doing something a little more high tech here. We didn't take it back and added it.
Yeah. Well, on your day, it's a string, this is a string.
No, you're recording and then putting it out there and all that.
Yeah.
But I, buddy, I sent you a link.
I saw.
On the Amazon.
Yeah, I saw. I'll say you. Is it? Or I don't know. God, you have to let me look at that.
I don't see a number big enough to be.
You say OBS is open broadcast.
Old buddy's drum.
It is a, it is a user-built platform.
And it's free to download.
It is free to download. I've been using it since. Yes, it is safe. We've never had a crash to close out.
It'll be on here.
So we need a camera, really.
Yeah. The rest.
I've got a question here about, uh, it's not showing the sixteen thousand or the third two thousand that we got on this report on.
The sixteen thousand was in April.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
What you're looking at there is, uh, it will show up on the warrants because it's a, a journal entry under expense.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure it was. Good question for me.
I just want to make sure.
They initially both were found in April. And both of them, you will not show up on warrant because they are a journal entry innocent.
Okay, thank you.
I make it motion, we accept the warrants.
I'll second that. Motion been made and properly seconded to accept the warrants. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say the same. Motion carried. Thank you.
And now we're signed.
You doing anything special for your birthday?
Got to come see us.
He's here.
What's more special than that, dear?
Every day is my birthday.
Does anybody have anything for anybody about anything?
No, sir.
For once, I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll serve it up.
Motion been made and properly seconded to adjourn the meeting. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say the same. Motion carried. Thank you.